Like to call the Central School Board meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five to order with all board members present except for Krieger. And welcoming our new board student rep, Chris Aleniki, welcome. Happy to have you. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes, conversations from board members?
We'll be approved as per that.
I'll second that. Most made by Crayle, second by Icshens. Any other conversations? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. Agenda is approved. Moving on to A five, the consent agenda. If you were in here a little bit earlier, refresh your screen. There was some extracurricular assignments that were added to the consent agenda. Is there any conversations or questions from board members? Hearing none. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? Most made by Icshens, second by Erickson. Any other conversations? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. Consent agenda is approved. Not going too fast.
No, you're good.
We'll move on to acceptance of gifts. We have the Norwood Young America Lions for four hundred dollars, four hundred dollars for Title One night. The N Y A Lions Club for four hundred dollars for literacy night. Central Booster Club for the Steam Lego Kits, twenty-five hundred dollars. Central Booster Club for drama sets, props, costumes for three thousand. Any questions? All right, again, extremely generous from our community, so thank you. Move to your gifts. You'll say by Pro Box. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vince. Any other conversations or questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. Gifts are accepted. Moving on to public forum. All right, we'll move on then to the monthly reports. We'll start with the Student Council. If you want to just stand up, say your name, your grade, and give a little report, we'd appreciate it.
Something that we're doing is repeating with food drive. So it's a couple of hundred dollars a month. We can get our donations. As a winning writer time, it's a free. Or also competing with the middle school, like as a high school versus a middle school, who can get the most? Because we've been trying to get in a lot of donations in these past years. Also, our broad outside is pruned by Mr. Roby, and the theme is Minecraft, I believe. Also, we are starting to plan. Oh, we also had a blood drive in October. And I think it went pretty well. We donated blood, which is always a good thing. And then we are starting to plan things for winter, and we have a meeting tomorrow.
Any questions from board members? All right, thank you. So is there a place for the community to donate food also, or?
We are going through the Balsa Basket and.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Also, if you have kids here, send it with them.
Are you doing it by pound?
No, I think we're doing it by item.
Well, get those ramen boxes.
Cheat code.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. You're more than welcome to stay, but you would be probably the first student council rep I would if you chose to. We understand a few other things to do, so thank you very much for being here. Appreciate your work. Thank you. We'll move on to student representative report. I know, Chris, it's your first day, so you if you don't have anything, that is okay, but if there's anything you want to bring up, here's a good time to do so.
I think the whole smart pass has been pretty well for the past few days since we've like pushed down on it. Other than that, I think the kiosk sense of getting rid of it, I think they did work in classrooms. But otherwise, I think everything's going pretty well.
So just a little background. So when our students at the high school are going to go somewhere, we don't have like a a paper pass system, it's a smart pass system, it's online. And so when we first rolled it out, and please fill in if I'm saying something wrong. When we first rolled it out a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, you, you, you typed, you typed in your pass, you got your pass, and then you kind of left your Chromebook on your desk and your teacher could see when you were gone and like after a certain amount of time, it like would turn red, like, oh, where's Sarah, you know? But teachers went to a kiosk system in their, in their room, so it was like one computer for the entire class and things weren't working as well. So it's, we went back to, we went back to the individual system and and we're seeing good results. Kids, of kids where they need to be.
Middle school and high school.
Part of that, Mr. Larson and I sent out a weekly recap of the top users and destination where people are making passes to. So we're trying to just collect more accurate data with the kiosk. Got a little, some kids would feel all the ins and outs of things, so we're trying to take that and give more accurate.
The days of bringing the toilet seat to the bathroom?
No, no more days of bringing the toilet seat to the bathroom. That is funny. That's funny that you bring that up.
All right.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Anything else, Chris, or questions from board members?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome to the team. We'll move on to superintendent report.
You bet. So up in your screen and behind you here, I have our monthly check-in on enrollment. And we're holding pretty steady. We're in that, we're still in the nine forty. I mean, we lost kind of some onesies and twosies here, but we're still well above our budgeted, our fiscal year twenty-six budget amount, which is nine fifteen. That's represented by the yellow line, so. And then year over year, we're, we're still above what of, of our projected enrollment. So that is, that is really good news. That's a really positive trend that we've seen over the last couple of years, for sure. Any questions on enrollment? Tech, the, the tech and the tech levy, staff development and curriculum are, are attached here. And just for your puzle, we generally don't go over them. But one thing I did want to bring up to all the board members is the leader, the twenty twenty-six Leadership Camp, MSBA Leadership Conference just opened up. And that's in January. It's January, I put it in my calendar. Hold on a second. Let me say the right dates here. I think it's January sixteenth and seventeenth, fifteenth and sixteenth is the actual conference. But one thing that I would like to point out is on the fourteenth, there is an opportunity for any board member that's gone through Phase One and Phase Two, which is everyone at the, well, everyone except for Tony at the table, to do Phase Three, which is igniting, I think it's called igniting strategic teams or something like that. I, you know, honestly, I would, I would love it if you would look at your calendar and see if this is something that you wanted to, wanted to do. I would encourage all of you to, to come as a, as, as a board. Or to go as a board. It's free of charge. You can, I know the last time we've had people go down there and stay down there just because it's easier with traffic and whatnot. But it is, it generally is a good conference, gives you a chance to connect with other board members. It's, it's quite well attended. I mean, I, I would say there's probably I don't know, over, there's generally over a thousand people there from across the state of Minnesota. So just I think it, enrollment closes like a, like the it closes on January fourth or fifth, or something like that, like right away at the beginning of January. So if you could take a peek at it and maybe I'll check in with you again next month, but if you already know it's something you want to do, I can register you right away. I really would encourage you. I'm going down. I, I, I go down every single year.
Fourteenth was the phase three?
Yep, so, so the fourteenth. Well, I think that, I think Phase Three is a day-long piece, so it's like a nine to four or something like that. So it would, if you, if you went to just Phase Three, it would be all day Wednesday, but if you went to the whole thing, it would be all day Wednesday, all day, excuse me, all day Thursday, and then it gets done at like one thirty or something like that on Friday is the last, is the last session. So I have, like, if you haven't, if you haven't gotten the, the journal. Yeah, so if, all the details, I, it's, it should be like right in the middle here when I was looking at it. It'll talk about Phase Three. Here, this is, it's right here on this leader, it's this page right here. It has the Leadership Conference. So if I'm looking at Phase Three, it's nine AM to four PM on, on Wednesday and set the Hyatt Regency downtown. So I would just really I've never done Phase Three. Pardon me?
It was a good conference last year.
Yeah, yeah, it is a, it's a, yeah, it is kind of fun. Good way to recharge. Mm-hmm, yeah, so. Anything? Just a follow-up from last month. I know we talked briefly about soccer, our soccer co-op. We did have, I did have like a back and forth with Civil East. And I talked to, I talked to the superintendent there today. They came back and they're like, well, our busing costs are going to go up. We would like to put the busing costs in the fair share agreement. And I just said, no, that's not, that's not how we do a fair share agreement. We're not going to take on their busing costs. Now, if we have, if it's a game night and they have to have an additional bus to like bring a, to bring a kid to a game, that would be something that we would put in a fair share agreement because that's part of a a contest, if you will, but not their daily practice busing costs. I honestly don't know how they're leaning. I know they I think they weren't successful in their levy here a couple of weeks ago. I think that just adds another layer of complexity to an already complex situation for all of us now. But I will stay on the record as I think it's a good thing if we would take it on. Just for the simple fact that our players, our athletes would get recognized in a conference. We have a set conference schedule. We can, like I said, we can get all-conference nominations. We can qualify for playoffs. I mean, there's just, there's just a multitude of, of positives for all the students, in particular, central students, so.
How many kids are we away from having our own team?
So we, so I think the, I think the hard part is we are young, like really young. And so I think, Joe, I'm looking at you, Joe. I think we had, we had thirteen or fourteen participants just for us. He's looking it up right now. They, I, let's see how close I am. I think we had fourteen and Civil East had twenty. I think they're thirty-four. Am I close? Thirteen. Twenty-two, okay, that's close. Yep, so, so we had in the mid thirties. I, the, like ideally, you want at least eighteen to field a varsity team. At least eighteen. You know, and if you were going to run a full schedule JV and varsity, obviously need, you could, you could do that with forty kids. So it, at this point in time, I think we need the co-op. And, and I think they want it to. I, I do. I, I just, there, it's a, it's a it, like I said, we're just young. So we have a lot of, a lot of seventh, eighth and ninth graders playing against a lot older kids, juniors and seniors. It's, it's boys versus grown men doing here.
The rest of the schedule was JV to build that group. We kind of follow Rockford Schools is doing the same thing. For three seasons in a row, Rockford played in JV, only with the hope of, you know, as they're seventh and eighth grade, by the time they're tenth and eleventh, then they would play a varsity schedule and a JV schedule. So we, we've been talking about kind of that similar process.
Yeah.
So we could do a, sign up like a two-year agreement with we, we want to do three?
Yeah, so we'd want to do three, and the reason for that is, is we are currently in, or the season that just ended was the first year of the Wright County Conference two-year schedule. So next year, if we did this, we would still, we would be, they would still be in the Wright County Conference, but we could pick up some games, but we would still be running a quote-unquote independent schedule. And then we would pick up the following year, we would be in the mix of the Wright County schedule, so we would do that for two years because they do like home and homes. And then we could, and, and that's basically what I pitched to Civil East Superintendent is we would do this for three years, and if we found that it wasn't working, or if somebody was unhappy, we could just walk away from it after two years and, and go back to whatever it is we wanted to. I think another piece of this is Lester Prairie is part of this co-op. They have yet to send somebody, but, but you have to remember, like going from Leicester to where, where do they practice? Gaylord, they practice in Gaylord. Is, is, it's a hike. And, and if we were here and we already have an agreement from the city that Friendship Park would be our, you know, an additional practice site and potentially a JV game site that we, you know, twenty minutes is different than an hour, you know, and, and especially, you know, it just, so we would see, we would see how that goes. And, and I think we talked about last time, I think we had, we had somebody on staff step up to be the coach, but he fully admits that he is not a technically, he is not a soccer coach. He is, he is a logistics coordinator, kind of like me with esports. It's like logistics coordinator of getting all the ducks in a row. I do think we would have a really good chance of getting a a soccer person that would be good for our kids technically and, and coaching-wise, so. So he said he'd let me know by Thursday. Because I, I know our athletic director wants to build a schedule one way or another.
What's our alternative? We just maintain?
Maintain, yep, maintain the system. And, and again, over there with them as the host, the, what's their conference, Joe? I'm sorry. South Central Conference does not have soccer, so we are running a fully independent schedule down there. We're playing like St. James, St. Clair, New Ulm, Cathedral, or, yeah, you know, and, and pulling, going the other way to the, it, it's just, it, it works. It's just not the best for our kids. Okay, that's all I have.
Has Lester Prairie been involved in these conversations?
No, no, they don't. I mean, we're, we're in contact with them, but they, I mean, they, it's, I think we will let them know that, and, yeah. So they, so they're part of the girls, they can join the girls' co-op as well. They, no, they can't join the girls' co-op. That's just Mayor Lutheran and us. Thank you. And Civil East, yes, excuse me. Thank you, Joe.
What were the, like the, the practice day busing costs, like just ballpark?
So currently, they, because of how many girls they send over, they use a van. So their costs are significantly lower. We have to use a bus to send our boys over. And it was, let's, let's just say, give or take six thousand dollars for a season for those busing costs. So they'll, they'll probably, they're, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna eat the cost between whatever that van is and the driver and probably about six thousand dollars. They use four point O as well, so I'm guessing the costs are similar. So we're, so let's just say it's four thousand dollars more than what there is today, divided by X amount of, X amount of participants that they have. They and we, like, I, I don't want to sound just like, that's just kind of the way it is. We did that, we did that with our girls' soccer and Mayor Lutheran for years. Years, and, and boys to Watertown Mayor for that matter. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, I think it's, it's easy for me to say because it's not, it's not my, it's not my transportation money, but it's, the, the experience is going to be significantly better for all the kids, for all the athletes.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Yep.
Any other questions for Superintendent Shockmire? Any other board reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion items. Mr. Erickson?
Discussion items. Do you want this for your twenty-five audit presented by Bergen D V and Amy?
All right. This is Andrew Grace. You've seen him before. He is going to be presenting our audit and have at it whenever you like.
There's two documents that you have in your agenda packets, one being your financial statements and the other being our communications letter. So in that financial statement, I wanted to highlight our independent auditor's report. So going on to the next slide here, it does highlight kind of what our role is as your auditor and also what your role is at the district. And your role is to prepare the financial statements, and our role is to provide assurance on those financial statements through our audit. So that provides assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that through our audit opinion, which is a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. Just a couple other bullet points, going back to that, that last slide there. In the communications letter, we do have some other information included in there. We also have our government auditing standards report and our Minnesota legal compliance report in the financial statements themselves. The government auditing report talks about our consideration of internal control over financial reporting. So we take a look at the processes and procedures and the policies around the preparation of the financial statements. And we're required as your auditor to provide in writing any significant deficiencies or, or material weaknesses in internal control that come to our attention as part of that understanding. We had one finding to report this year. That was a lack of segregation of accounting duties. It's a, it's a common finding for a finance office of this size. And so without, you know, adding additional employees, it's, it's a difficult one to address, but something that the board should continue to be aware of. The Minnesota legal compliance report then addresses the Office of the State Auditor's legal compliance guides. We're required as your auditor to report any non-compliance that comes to our attention as part of our audit, and we had no findings to report for this year. The communications letter includes all other required communications in accordance with audit standards and a lot of updates from previous years. But it also includes a financial analysis. So we'll take a look at some of the trend data, the charts and graphs that we have within that document. Also includes a legislative update and as well some emerging issues for some future accounting changes. So going on to the next slide, we'll dig into the charts and graphs. So to begin, I wanted to start by taking a look at the general education aid formula allowance. So about seventy-four percent of the revenues within the general fund come from state sources. The largest component of revenue that comes from the state is in the form of general education aid. And that's a function of enrollment in this formula allowance here. So that formula allowance is at seven thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars here for two thousand and twenty-five. That was a two percent increase over the prior year. The other side of that equation is, is again, enrollment. So you hear quite a few different enrollment terms. Adjusted ADM is one. That was one that was kind of on the slide there previously. But to kind of tell the, the story of this calculation, we wanted to just start with resident ADM. So these aren't students that you actually serve, but these are the ones that are, exist within the district boundaries that you could serve. So it kind of gives you an understanding of kind of that demographic here over the last five years. It has been pretty consistent or flat since two thousand and twenty-three. It did increase a little bit here in two thousand and twenty-five to one thousand, about two hundred and fifty. Majority of that being in that kindergarten area with the other, you know, areas. Elementary being fairly flat and a little bit of a decline in secondary there. Those numbers get, you can go one more forward. There we go. So to get to the pupil unit number, which is used in that calculation for general education aid, it starts with the residents that are served. And it also takes into account the open enrollment process. And then after, after those numbers are determined, it also takes into account waiting. So that waiting chart there at the, at the top shows that you get about a twenty percent premium for secondary students. So that, again, it goes into that calculation of pupil, that adjusted pupil unit served number. But one thing to highlight, just in terms of the open enrollment process, is we did see residents going elsewhere, remain fairly consistent dating back to two thousand and twenty-three. It's been around five hundred and sixty. But the non-residents coming in have increased considerably over the last five years. So that was at about a hundred and sixty-one back in two thousand and twenty-one. It has increased each of the last each of the years presented here to a high point here in two thousand and twenty-five at about two hundred and fifty-two. So that's really kind of what's driven the, that adjusted pupil unit number increase to a high point here in two thousand and twenty-five at one thousand sixty-one. Next chart just kind of gives that same information, just in bar graph form, format. One other chart that's kind of helpful is just to kind of look at the rate of change with those numbers. And so you can see that here in two thousand and twenty-five, I did see about a three point two percent increase in the pupil unit served. Going on to the next chart, also wanted to highlight just the makeup of general fund revenue. So again, seventy-four percent coming from state revenue, which was the largest component of the increase here that we see in two thousand and twenty-five. Overall, we did see about a six and a half percent increase, increase of about nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. That state revenue increase relates to that increase in enrollment, the increase in formula allowance, as well as, as well as some additional special education funding. So really kind of driving that increase overall. Other categories are fairly consistent with the prior year. Also wanted to highlight the budget to actual results. So this really highlights the board's role as it relates to the financial statements, and that's adopting and monitoring the budget. The final budget called for thirteen point nine million dollars of revenue, thirteen point nine million dollars in expenditures. After transfers out to other funds, expected about a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar decline in fund balance overall. Revenues came in at about fifteen point one million dollars, so about one point two million dollars better than anticipated. Majority of that occurred in that state sources line, which came in about nine hundred thousand dollars better than anticipated. So being conservative for enrollment numbers, special education funding, which ultimately came in better than anticipated, ultimately drove that variance there on the revenue side. Expenditures were basically right on budget, just over one percent variance overall. About fourteen point one million compared to a thirteen point nine million dollar budget. So then after considering transfers in and out, had about a nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar increase overall in fund balance. Next, wanted to highlight the allocation of general fund. It's an auditor's by program, and this really just highlights the consistency in terms of that allocation with about sixty-two percent going to the instructional category. Going on to the next slide, this highlights the general fund operations overall, but also provides kind of a breakdown of the different fund balance categories. So as we saw in, in terms of the overall operations, we did see an increase in fund balance of about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which brought total fund balance up to three point five million dollars, the highest of the years presented. If we take a look at the buffer part of that chart, this highlights the, the different components of fund balance. The first that I wanted to highlight is all of those restricted categories. So when the state provides resources to the school, certain funding sources are restricted for particular programming and activity. And if those dollars are unspent at the end, end of the year, they have to be set aside for those purposes in future years, and that those restricted categories basically represents what that balance is as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So some of those resources were spent down, some of them grew a little bit. The most significant changes that you're seeing in terms of the overall increase in fund balance occurred in that assigned fund balance category that increased from three hundred and eighty-seven thousand to nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for future programming. And the unassigned fund balance increased from nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand to one million four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars at the end of the year.
Can we stop right there? Does anyone have any que, I, I anticipate some questions on that slide. Does anyone have any, any questions on this slide that we can talk about? Amy is here. I'm here.
I mean, I know we had targeted, you know, a higher unassigned balance as a portion of total expenditures.
Yep.
The, it feels like the, the revenue uptick was more than we expected. Is that what's driving?
Yeah. And, and, and I would say generally that's in special ed revenue. And so, like, I want to paint I'm looking at you. So just, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll say this, and then I need, I'm gonna look at you to kind of correct me if I say something wrong. So in the last year, we've had an increase of forty-four students in I E Ps. And and so we've had to hire more staff for them as well. So even though we've had more revenue in special ed, there's some costs that come along with that because there, because it's, yeah, we have more revenue, but it la, it, it la, it lags, it lags when, when that revenue comes in. And in, in addition, part of the reason we put, we put some of this money in a, in assigned fund balance is if you recall, in the last legislative session, special ed transportation is, is decreasing from ninety-five percent to, or a hundred percent to ninety percent. And special ed cross-subsidy aid is going to be, we don't know what's happening with. We're assuming that something's going to happen, especially across subsidy aid. I think that the governor and the legislature targeted two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty million dollars in special ed cuts that are going to hit us this year. So we are, we are anticipating that those funds filling in the gap of, of what's going to happen, that we don't know that's going to affect us. So we feel like this kind of sets us up for the least amount of student impact. Thanks, I'm look, okay, all right. Any, anything you want to add?
I'm just gonna add one other thing too. And we, just that unassigned fund balance category at the bottom there at one million four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. You know, one time, one thing we'd like to highlight is just the board's policy as it relates to reserves and financial health. It's not necessarily a target fund balance, but it is a minimum fund balance threshold that the board's established. And it's to maintain no less than seven percent of budgeted general fund expenditures. And right now that ratio is at about ten point five percent. So that can sometimes fluctuate just based on, you know, legislative changes in the economy, you know, and really kind of establishing those to allow for more flexible decisions, you know, during those processes. So just kind of wanted to highlight where that fell for this year's comparison to that.
So when we were talking as a board, we were like, should we up our fund balance? Yeah, I, do you remember that dialogue? It's like, it's seven and it's like, should we, should we aim for eight percent? And, and, and I think our, our decision was we would love to really get to eight percent, but we're not going to change the policy. And so like this kind of gives us a little bit of runway if, if, if the policy committee wants to look at that. And, and when, when, when Andrew goes to the next slide, I, I also am trying to set this up. It's also important to see where we are in comparison to like school, or schools in Minnesota as well. And that's on the next slide. Okay, so I'm gonna, I, anything else before he moves on?
My other question was on this next one.
Yep.
I know we made some changes to be a little bit more conservative on the budget side, expecting to increase this number over a couple of years.
Yep.
This was just a larger jump than I expected. Thought was that, are we, are we spending enough in certain areas, right? Are we doing the right thing?
So I, how do I want to answer that? Are we spending enough?
It was more, it was just a little bit unexpected.
Yeah, yes, I, I would agree. So I think what was unexpected to us was the, to Amy and I, was the level of special ed revenue that came in. We met with Paul Farin, who is the head of special ed finance and, and he, he tried to explain, he's like, he's like, he's like, you've got some things that are lagging, you had more kids. He's like, and, and I mean, to kind of sum it up, he's like, you're just one bad year away from this kind of going pear shaped the other way. You know, and, and, and we hit.
There will already be a reduction next year.
Correct. And, and he kind of get, and I can't say it, I can't say it on camera here, but he gave us a number that if he said, if it all came out of, out of, if the two hundred and fifty million dollars in reductions came out of special ed cross subsidy aid, he gave us a percentage that we should maybe shoot for. He's like, if all of it came out, this is what it would be. He's like, he knows that. But what was I also gonna say? Shoot, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. There's just something else that he pointed out that, that it, it just, oh gosh, I, I can't remember what I was gonna say now, I'm sorry. But I, I think we, we want to get a handle on it. And for, for cross subsidy aid, again, I just want to point out, we have to, for every dollar we spend, we get forty-four cents back. So it's, it's getting more cross subsidy aid, it isn't necessarily the greatest thing either, you know what I mean? Cause that means you're, you're, you're out, you're outputting to get it. So, and, and we had to make adjustments because of the increase in numbers of our, of special ed students for sure, you know?
We're essentially set to absorb the impact of some of the upcoming budget cuts, better than we would have been otherwise.
That is a perfect, that is a perfect summary, yes. Okay.
Going on to the, the next slide, this is another ratio. It's not directly, or not exactly the same as, as the board's policy, but does give more comparable data in terms of, you know, how the district compares to statewide averages. And this specific ratio is unrestricted fund balance. So this would include both your assigned fund balance and your unassigned fund balance as a percent of unrestricted expenditures. So think of those other restricted categories, it wouldn't include those related expenditures in there as well. So that ratio with the surplus for this year did increase to about twenty-one point three percent, which is a bit more in line with, with the statewide averages overall. We also provide two other charts here, one being the revenue per student number as well as expenditures per student. And this just gives some, a different level of, of, of analysis, just in terms of, you know, how things have shifted in comparison to enrollment. Also, it kind of factors in maybe some of the construction activity that's taking place. So we can see here in twenty twenty-five, did decline a little bit from twenty-one thousand down about twenty, twenty thousand overall. There was an increase in, in the general fund number there with an increase in revenues at a greater rate than enrollment. Community ed increased, building instruction kind of came down there with, with some of that construction activity. But historically, the district's been below statewide averages as well as, you know, similar districts within the same EDM peer group. On the expenditure side, also, you know, kind of historically has been below statewide averages as well as the peer group overall. But did see a little bit of a decline in the general fund, meaning that expenditure did not, or enrollment increased at a greater rate than expenditure. But overall did see a significant decline because of the activity in the building construction. Last two funds that we have to cover are the food service fund and the community service fund. So first highlighting the food service fund, did see a fairly break even year, just an eighty-five hundred dollar surplus. And after other financing sources, ultimately did see an increase in fund balance to a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars at the end of the year. The, the next slide highlights the community service fund. This fund did have some spend down of fund balance over the last couple of years, as there's been some changes in programming in this area. And, and did see a surplus here in, in the two thousand twenty-five of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, increasing that fund balance to a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars at the end of the year. And I think that's, I think based on our discussions, kind of part of the goal is to establish some reserves in, in that area too. Again, just to allow for some flexibility in terms of program. So that's it in terms of our, our audit results and as well as that financial analysis. And, you know, appreciate, you know, Amy, the team and all their help throughout the audit process, but I'd like to open it up for any questions.
On the community service fund, why was there, so we're up one thirty-six? What's the difference in that?
So I would say, if you look at the, if you look at the two previous years, I, I think it's important to look at it from a, from a global standpoint. We were running some classes that had seven, eight kids in them.
Yeah.
So we basically said, we need to have full classrooms and, and that, I mean, so we, yeah, so we, we trimmed some of that up.
Makes sense.
Yep. I, I think furthermore, we're probably anticipating a little bit, that increasing a little bit more this year too. As we shut down the clone site and moving to, moving to one site, it's gonna make things more efficient for sure.
Cool.
Anything else for Andrew?
Nice to see you going in that direction.
Yeah, it's, I, I honestly, it's, it's been, yeah, it's been, it's been a few years coming for sure. It's, it feels, we're not in a trend yet, I don't want to, and, and I just, I, I do, I know Andrew already did, but I want to thank Amy. She just, everyone needs an Amy in their life, I'll tell you that. She's, she, she is, she is very cognizant of where we're spending money and, and just asks the right questions at the right time. So it's good. So thank you, Amy, for everything you do.
Any other questions?
I think it's good to see that, you know, our adjusted pupil unit rate is going up at a higher rate than our resident pupil rate, right? So we're getting people enters into the school at a higher rate than people are coming to our community. So we're, you know, converting it, we're bringing people inside here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Right, you too.
Do you two student support services update?
Welcome back, Haf.
Hello. All right, so just a few things in our world. We had a back to school supply drive back in August. It was supported by Love Inc. You don't have to put them in. St. John's Health kind of organizer event, but Sarah Beadley was there to help. And approximately sixteen kiddos from our district were able to get school supplies for this school year. Weekend backlog program is up and running. The food job helps us and then Sarah gets grant money to help support this. So kids go home with a bag full of food for the weekend. And this year we have six families, thirteen kids that are benefiting from this program. We are in the season of thanks right now. So we have twenty-one families, about forty-one students this year that will get a Thanksgiving meal. Community vendors, don't, and then Mac and cheese provides the meal for us with a fifteen percent discount. So they get turkey, mashed potatoes, stuffing, gravy, sweet potatoes, green beans and fresh baked pie. And then the admin team plus Kirsten and Sarah, they help deliver all the meals to the families, which is, is really fun. To get to go and, you know, deliver some joy for them on that day. Then in December, we're doing our season of giving. When I printed this, we were at twenty-three families and we are now twenty-five families. So roughly sixty kids will have presents on the tree this year, thanks to teachers, greater town groups, community members for donating. So the kids can have some joy on Christmas. So we thank all the community members, all the staff for their generosity. The next one is structured literacy training, so part of the act. Our staff got trained or in the process of getting trained with the letters. And our parent educators who are in the thick of working with kids with reading, they are also getting trained. So Leah Joseph, our school psychologist, became a trainer. So on our half days, our parents are coming in and they are getting two hours per training each time. And you can see the sessions, there's four different sessions and what they're going to be trained on. So they've finished one already and we have good feedback from them. So I think, I think they appreciate that continued education themselves. So they feel confident when they're working with kids. Multi-tiered systems of support, so our MTSS team is what we call it. We have one at elementary and one at the high schools, so teachers who have concerns with kids. It can be academically, it can be social emotional. They come to the, the team and we develop interventions. We look at the data and this year, if you go to the next slide, it's showing how many kids we have in that tier two, tier three piece of the triangle. So elementary and title one, we have forty-five kiddos. Reading four, we have forty, which I can't remember if this is after I talked to Andrea. We have another reading four person that joined our team, so that number may have increased already. And then social emotional, those kiddos are working with like Sarah Beadley. And we have about eighty-five kids that cycle through and have groups with her. And then at the secondary level in middle school, we have forty-eight kids that are receiving reading intervention. High school, twenty-four, middle school math, forty-two, high school math, eleven, which is a math elective with Ms. Ludford. I think still there's some instructor on that too, but we've seen a lot of success by having that elective. And then social emotional at the middle school, we have six kiddos and executive function, we've got twenty kids. Mr. Halbach and Ms. Hanson are helping with executive function.
Can you talk about what executive function is?
Yeah. So executive function is the way in which you're organizing things, not necessarily always just in front of you, but even your thoughts, like graphic organizers, just to help prioritize. How do I get all this homework done? You know, how do I make a schedule? Just kind of helping kids learn and understand. Some of us naturally just know how to organize and other kids kind of need that direct instruction. So Sarah and, or Mr. Halbach and Ms. Hanson have groups where they're pinpointing those skills and helping kids develop them. And we've seen good success with that too. I think it's a good thing that we brought, not all kids just need academics support. There's other pieces of us that make the puzzle altogether. So, and then our last piece that I wanted to share is Allison Cruz, our speech pathologist, is headed to Washington DC for the national speech conference. And she's actually going to have a piece that she's presenting with our name on it. So they'll represent central public schools while she's there. And it's part of her grad school that she did her thesis on, but it's like gestures and how that relates to language development. So she is headed there on Friday. It's a quick turnaround, I think she comes back on like Sunday. So, but she's really excited and wanted to share, hopefully that I guess is just an awesome opportunity for her to share what her knowledge is and that she works for us.
St. Cloud, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so St. Cloud State in, asked her to come along and, and they were impressed with her, with her work. Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's, we have, we have a lot of great staff that work here. And I mean, it's just a, it's just a testament to her hard work and, and continued learning. It's just fantastic. Agreed.
Any questions? I don't have copy of the call this year.
No copy.
All right, great, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
The three twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven encounter final in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay, so it's, mark, mark aside so that way you don't get it confused. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, it's, it's back to back. So we're talking about twenty-six, twenty-seven first. So this, nothing has changed, although, although it's very, yeah, it has changed. This looks a lot better. So, so I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure our city leaders are watching, are gonna be watching this podcast. But I had, I had a city leader, the executive director of economic development. She's like, you know what, that calendar is on, on most people's fridge. She's like, that's, you're missing an opportunity to like, to, to kind of show off central public schools, you should brand that thing. And I'm like, I know you, yes, you should laminate this calendar. Anyway, we rebranded it, it probably, it feels, honestly, it feels a lot easier on the eyes in terms of layout. I was joking with the folks down at this end of the table that design work is not my forte. So somebody else did this and I'm very pleased with it. But, so, so we imported everything from our, from our other version of our calendar into here. I worked with CEA, we had a meet and confer here about a month ago and we added, we added in the conference date. So if you, if you, if I bring you through, we added in November ninth and twelfth for secondary conferences. And where's elementary conferences? There should be some of, oh, that, yeah, because the other conferences are before school. And then we, and then we have the elementary conferences and secondary conferences on March tenth and twelfth there. That, something's off on there. I can, I can tell already that something's off. I think we're missing a conference date, so. Yeah, we, we have, we have, there's something that has to be adjusted on conferences here. So I, hold on, let me grab my other, my other version. So, so here's, here's what happens when we import. I, I, I just got this one back today, cause I noticed it before and then. Okay, bear with me, on air production. Yeah, it's, I, I, yep. Let's see, wait, wait, let me get my, just a second here. Cause well, and we're not voting on it today, but I will, I will get, here we go. Here's the calendar with conferences. This is the old version. So we were gonna do November ninth and twelfth for the secondary conferences and then November tenth and twelfth. Need to add that in, November tenth and twelfth for elementary. And then in the spring, it was March tenth and twelfth for secondary conferences. And then March eleventh and sixteenth for elementary conferences, eleventh and sixteenth. I'll, I'll talk to Kyle and get those added in. But just taking you through the overall calendar, again, this, this next year, we are back. So this year, if you recall, we are, we are going after Memorial Day, because we have two weeks off over winter break. This, this calendar, which, which you approved the bones of last year, we're able to get back to that twenty, May twenty-eighth, which is before, which is the, the day before Memorial Day, Memorial Day is on the thirty-first. I, I guess I don't, I mean, typically adding conferences in, I, I mean, there hasn't been a ton of discussion at the board level about conferences. I just, it's, yeah, yeah, so I'll, I will get, so again, this is first blush and then we'll prove it next month. So I'll, I'll make these edits. And again, I have a version that has them on, they just, in the import, there was a, something lost in translation. But in, any questions about the overall just structure?
Are there any teacher work days after?
No.
Would you ever want, are they done?
So, so the twenty, so the twenty-third is a no school, but no, there aren't, no, we do not have, so they're, they're done at the same time. So that's that, that's a half day. And then, and then we do that and we, we've had actually pretty good success the last few years of getting. they're, they're done at the same time. So that's that, that's a half day. And then, and then we do that and we, we've had actually pretty good success the last few years of getting staff to come to graduation. And again, you're all obviously invited to graduation too. So we want to have as many staff there as, as possible. So half day, they get their grades submitted, clean up, graduation. See you in, see you in August. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you flip to the other side, the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight calendar. This does not have conferences on it. So again, what are our cadence of calendars is we approve two calendars at a time. This, I, this, bear with me. I'm just saying this for everyone here. We, so we approved the first, the first draft of, of this calendar. Um, the bones of it. And then next year at this time, we would add the conferences in and then do twenty eight, twenty nine calendar. Um, so this is our, this is our first draft. So I'm going to take you through it from, from the beginning. So go up to the top to August of twenty seven. Um, our new teacher workshop will be on, on that, um, on that, uh, Friday before workshop week. Then workshop, uh, so there's, they're already, so we got some, they did it, they did it the wrong way. I need to move those down. See, I'm already seeing some errors here. So, uh, workshop week would be the thirtieth, thirty first, first, second, and not the Friday. They just, they shifted it down. Um, uh, when they did the coloring of the boxes there. And then we'll continue transition day. If just, I, I would like a brief bit of dialogue about transition day. Um, I know, I know we've asked about it when we do our parent survey. Um, everyone's still on board with transition day. I know what, like the feedback that we've gotten from middle school, uh, parents specifically is like, yep, this is really good for our kids. Um, the feedback that we get from elementary folks is, um, for some of them, they probably don't even remember the old, the old way we used to do it. Cause we used to do like a pop in, um, like an open house style where, um, I'm just going to pick on Sarah because she's next to me, but like Sarah's, Sarah's very, um, um, assertive as a parent and she dominate, you know, she would dominate the time with the teacher in the way that we do it now, that some of you have had with your, with your children. Is there's a set time, you're alone with your teacher. It's one-on-one. It's more personalized experience. Um, and I guess I'm, I would like just a brief, like if we're going to change something, now is the time to change it. You know, as we set the calendar, that's why I'm just asking. I'm not suggesting that we change it, but this would be the, the time. Krista, do you have any feedback about transition day as a, as a, cause it would, it's, it's our sixth graders, new students and ninth graders? I don't know. You're just a couple.
So my grade, we had COVID, and the ninth grade was the referendum.
The construction.
So it's not the best.
Yeah. But I know that it helps the middle school students for sure.
Bad example. Why'd you bring that up? Just kidding, just kidding. Um,
intro.
Mm-hmm.
Like just a quick one-on-one with your kiddo's teacher.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah. And I think it's a good opportunity to kind of level set as far as like, are emails correct? You know, do you have all your supplies, everything like that? It's just a good opportunity. So the first day isn't so chaotic trying to come in, the kids already have a familiarity with the school teacher and and kind of know the cadence of where to go. So I think it's been really good.
Any, has there been any confusion? I, I don't, we've never had a child show up on the wrong first day. So I, I would imagine that there hasn't been confusion. But have, have you heard of anything particularly, particularly from, from Spencer and Tony? I mean, you have elementary age students. You haven't heard of any confusion.
Kids go, so it's fine.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I always have to stop and think. Are they going to school this day or?
Yeah.
But elementary has school on the seventh, right?
No, elementary, no. So the, the eighth, yep. So they start the eighth. So, so the,
I was reading that line. So.
Yep. So they start the, they start the eighth and then, um, because, so, so what they do is, is that used to be a transition, that the, the, the day after Memorial, or the day after Labor Day used to be a transition day and they actually got, elementary got feedback from their parents. So instead of, so one of the nights that we do the, or that the secondary does the open house, they have one night there and then they do it the next day, that Friday, which when all the secondary teachers are in professional development for that half day, the, the, the elementary teachers are doing their conferences. So then that day is made up on that Monday. So when, so when secondary is doing their transition day on that Monday, elementary has a professional development day. It's, it's all the same amount of time. It's just on different days. And, and they have found, um, well, I'd be honestly, what kind of precipitated that is, um, we actually had poorer attendance, um, on that day after Labor Day because some family, it, having it before Labor Day is just we're, we're, we're clipping at ninety seven percent attendance at the elementary school. It's very, very, very well attended. So obviously frame that in a positive. Okay. So then, um, moving through October, MEA is typical. November, um, we have that, uh, half day early release on November fifth. PD day on November eighth, um, uh, Thanksgiving break. Again, typical, just, you know, it's that the twenty fourth is technically, technically considered a teacher comp day. And then the twenty fifth and twenty sixth are off. So we continue that two-day week. Moving into December, um, uh, uh, the, the Christmas Eve is a holiday. Um, and again, we try to, try to keep when and all possible, I, I would, and I know we just didn't do it in November there, but we try to keep a three-day week when possible. Those are just better. Um, um, so, uh, we went through, you know, through Wednesday of that week, took a, took a day off, um, because it fit in the calendar. Um, and, and, and moved it forward. I just want to point out that there isn't, there is an extra day kind of floating out there and it's April fourteenth. I, I know I'm kind of jumping around here, but to make the student days and the teacher days line up, I, like, there's a random day that we just have to take off and, and, um, we've, we have in the, in the past few calendars, taken a random Friday off in, in April. Um, like we could move April fourteenth to December twenty second or, or some other place. Uh, I, the way that this sits right now, I like having that day just as a, as a float day because where, where it kind of can get tricky some years is depending on where New Year's falls, I have to take a hot, like New Year's is a holiday. And if it lands on a Sunday and it's going to, this is going to happen in the twenty eight, twenty nine calendar. It's going to land on a Sunday and we are going to be required to take that Monday off. So like that, I would anticipate that April fourteenth day moving to like March or January second, the following year. If that, if that makes sense. That, that forty, that, which is Good Friday.
Uh, April twenty eighth, twenty.
April fourteenth or April twenty eighth?
Sorry, April fourteen.
Is good, is Good Friday. So yeah, so that, so that's not one of our, um, assigned holidays, but, but let's, people travel, like it is, it, it's people. Yes.
We've done, I feel.
Yep, we, yep. Mm-hmm. Yep, we can do that. It over spring break. So, so I get, and that's, I, I think Josh just pointed out, that's the nuance of it is, is if, is if we, if we have spring break over, over Easter weekend, you kind of gain a day in there, you know, in, in theory, it just, it, it, it all when where, where Christmas lands, um, actually drives a whole lot of the calendar. To be, and this year we have two weeks off because that was the right call. So, um, Yep, it is.
That's a grind.
It is, it is. Yep. So, so again, that, that, okay, Josh brings up another good point. It's, it's like you try to balance how many, how many days, how many professional development days that you have at the beginning, at the end, like personally, I want our professional development days early. Because now people can apply the things we're learning right now. Um, but the reality is, is we do need some, some days on the end. Um, like April fourteenth, like, um, you know, some of the days on spring break there where if we, if we get one of those, uh, what's that thing called? A bomb cyclone or whatever it is, the, the, the polar vortex, what I, all these, all these terms that we've been learning over the last decade. Um, where, where, especially if we get some of those cold snaps, um, um, you know, where, where we're minus thirty five, minus forty degree wind chill. Um, we have some backup plan there. Um, I, I'm at, I'm, I'm at, uh, February here. So February, um, uh, uh, President's Day, um, we do have that off. That's for everyone. And that's typically when we would host the, um, uh, the pork produ-, the pork producers conference is here. Um, that's not, it's, that's not a must, but it's kind of a nice thing, uh, to, to have us in. That's one, that's another one of those days that's movable, uh, if we need it to, because I've aligned all of our contracts now that, um, President's Day and Good Friday are not written in our, in our twelve-month contracts. We have ten holidays that are named and then two floating holidays that I can assign, uh, that I can assign anything to, just gives us more flexibility. Um, and then, uh, moving on to March, spring break. We tried to fit that as best, it's, it's, it kind of is what it is. It's, we try to get it between winter season and spring season, no matter, I mean, you know, it's, 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 it's going to affect somebody all the time. But this, but honestly, right here, if you, if you look down, um, if you look down way in the bottom right-hand corner, and when, when we're looking at third quarter and fourth quarter, it's forty-three days in each, in each quarter. Which is, we try to, we try to even those out. You know what I mean? Um, as, as best we can. Um, and then, uh, like I said, April, that one day off and May, uh, uh, the twenty sixth will be our graduation. And that's, and in, in case you can't see that, that's a little graduation hat emoji on there. It's just little, it's really cute.
Regarding, uh, the March seventeenth, March twenty seventh.
Yep.
Early release or the staff development.
Yep.
Can we move those around?
Uh, yeah. So, so this is the end of a, so that is the end of the quarter.
Yep.
The seventeenth. Um, uh, so that's typically where, where we would, we would have a marking period. Um, because that's the half day. So we, that's, that's where we do the, the marking period. Um, that's honestly where it makes sense. I mean, I can move around the, the twenty seventh, that's for sure.
Well, I'm just thinking for, you know, that long two, two months of being in school. And then if we do have to use that fourteenth for a snow day.
Yep.
Now you have two months where there's no break at all. So is it, is it good to do the fourteenth and seventeenth?
In terms of, in terms of like, one of those would be the professional development day?
Yeah. I don't know if that's, I'm just thinking of, because then there's no school that day, at least then like in case we have to use a day, so if we have to use the fourteenth as a snow day, now they're in school from the March twenty eighth until May twenty sixth.
Yeah, I, it, it, it is, yes.
They're already off a week for spring break and plus one if we keep the, um, end of quarter.
Mm-hmm. Well, we, we, we do need to keep the, well, I, I don't want to change around the quarters. You know what I mean? But, but, but the, but the twenty seventh, I mean, any, honestly, I can drop the twenty seventh on any day. I mean, we could, we could put it on a Wednesday if we wanted to. I don't, I don't think, I don't want to put it on a Wednesday, but I'm just, I'm being a little facetious. We can put it, we're, we can literally put it wherever we want. Um, do people have suggestions of where, so I guess here's how I would like this to go. Um, you're the input team. So, uh, right now you're the input team. You'll be the decision-making team next, next month when we bring it to the final. But does somebody have a suggestion of where we, like, leave it as is, put it somewhere else? And then I'll hit, I'll do a feedback loop with CEA and say, hey, we thought about moving this in a different spot and here's why. I, I don't, Krista, if you have any suggestions or?
I think it's a move it down there because the two, two months is up there. Really hard on students, I think, to continuously go for two months straight.
With this schedule, what would be a good, I guess, day off if you had to pick for two months? I mean, is it better to do it, go a month and then have something early May and then April?
Um, I think with May, like we already have senior week and like the end of school days, like you do fun events. So I think April would be the best.
Good. So how do, how do you, how do you feel about if there was, like, if, if, if we, it, you know, right now it's attached to spring break. So that's just a longer, it's a longer break. If it was attached to the fourteenth of April. Like I, I mean, how do, how do you feel about that? Does that feel? I, I honestly have gotten no feedback, which is probably a good thing, right? Like, hey, you're, when you do take a break there longer. I, I haven't gotten negative feedback about that. To me, that is a spot that makes sense.
Well, in it, you know, like for, if you look at twenty six, twenty seven, Easter is on March twenty eighth. So that, that sounds people traveling. Twenty ninth, it worked good for families. So nobody's going to say anything.
Yep.
The only time we're ever going to hear anything is when we need a snow day and now you're back.
So, so I, I, okay, I take this back. I did hear feedback and, and again, keep it in, keep it in perspective. It was one person. We had to add, we, it was three years ago, we had to, we had to add one day back in. And it was on Good Friday. I heard about that from one person, but that was the only day. I mean, I think they were like, why'd you choose that day? Well, it was literally, and after I explained to this person that it was literally the only day left in the calendar to, to, to come to session in aft, in, in, you know, unless it was after graduation, then they understood completely. They say, oh yeah, that makes sense. You know? I mean, I'm not going to lie, moving it back gives us more flexibility.
I would say to me in the seventeenth, because then we could still keep the, you know, in this calendar year, change of year, but then we could keep the fourteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And then our snow day would be the seventeenth, if you needed makeup. Then we would scratch the edge of that comment that you had.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's, and then it's a good break because like Chris said, then you have one, two, three weeks sort of on each side.
Yep.
Although for sure, four, maybe a three-day weekend, depending on, I mean, sorry, for sure, three, maybe four days, unless it's a really bad winter. But there's nothing, no.
I, I, I'm looking, I'm seeing a lot of, I, I've seen headnots. Spencer, you good? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We're predicting the snow two years from now.
Yeah.
It will be wrong.
It gives us more flexibility then.
It, it would. Okay. Um, so how about this?
CEA.
Yeah.
Cause it is a staff development. So they not want to do the staff develop.
Um, I, I don't, I don't, yeah, I think, I think it just, I, I think it just depends on what we're doing. And we haven't even developed that calendar yet. So what are you, what are you thinking? On which?
On the staff development.
Yeah, I'm just more dates that I have to work around.
Well, there's a date, there's a date no matter what.
I know.
Yeah.
But you can still do games and everything is. Everybody in middle school, they can still do games, just like you.
Yeah, it's, it's scheduling it. Let's just, yeah, he's, Joe's just tipping you into his world, like spring sports is just, oh yeah, spring sports. Yeah. Yes. And yes, he's, it's, it,
Spring sports are so fun.
Yeah. March twenty seventh is a more likely of a day to cancel than April seventeenth. Yeah, I got you. I, I'm tracking.
It makes sense.
Okay. Okay. AD, AD hat says. Okay. I will, I will get this, I will get these colors cleaned up, um, and get those dates, uh, for conferences cleaned up on the twenty six, twenty seven calendar. And I will have a feedback loop with CEA and expect this to be on an action item for next month.
Do you need any of like the other federal holidays, like I hear like Juneteenth or, or do you even need June and July on here?
Um,
if it feels too cluttered.
Hmm.
I don't have a strong opinion. I'm just.
What was that saying?
Do we need to have June and July on the calendar? If it's a school calendar?
I don't think so.
If, and if it.
Maybe that provides space. Cause we have an inter, we have an internal calendar that we use for holiday, like Juneteenth and, and Fourth of July and things like that. Oh.
Okay. Okay. Well, see, there you go.
What, what do you, what did you say, Emily? I'm sorry.
I was just thinking if you took out two days, it would all fit, it would all fit right there. And you could put the attendance lines.
Hmm.
For each of the, I just.
Not to, not gonna.
I, I like that feedback.
I just didn't know if you needed.
But I don't, I wouldn't want to clutter this up more with putting attendance lines on there. But if you were to take those days, those two months out then.
Do we need, okay, so it's, and, and again, you've got kindergarteners coming in. Like, it, when we did the whole change to e-learning days, it was a big deal to add that e-learning day procedure in the lower left-hand corner. Is that, does that need to be on this calendar?
I would keep it on.
Keep it on there? Okay.
Many people won't remember, new people in the district.
Okay. Do we need the student, do we need the student? That's more for CEA and, and that's more of an internal thing. Do you care about that as parents?
I don't.
Okay.
I'm more about knowing when the semester ends.
Mm-hmm. And, and we can have that on here last day of, it is on there. Yeah. End of, end of first quarter, whatever it is. Okay. Yeah. It says it end of first quarter.
No, it is.
End of second quarter.
Like I said, I don't have a strong opinion. I just don't know if I would.
All right.
I didn't hear what you said earlier, take off June and July.
Um, yeah. And then Spencer uses it, but, but I think what, what I Um, yeah, and then Spencer uses it, but, but I think what, what, I think the feedback, what, could we do that? But then right alongside that was, could you add the attendance lines on this? Yep, to, to, maybe, maybe even keeping the twelve, but even keeping this, the attendance lines could go down here. Mm-hmm.
It's just something kind of.
I, hey, that's.
To encourage people to, if you're gonna make this really nice calendar, encourage people to have it posted on there.
Yeah.
And like, it's got all the information that you.
You got it. Okay. I like it. Thank you. That's a great thought. All right, anything else about the calendars? Thank you all. Great discussion, honestly. Well done.
The operational items, the one consideration of the fiscal year twenty five.
Okay, so what you're seeing here is those are, those are the communication documents. These are the ones that are forty to ninety pages long. This is, the presentation was the, the, the high-level stuff. This is the actual audit. And you're required as a board every year to finalize the audit by approving it. So that is, that is your responsibility to do it each year, so.
Any further questions about the audit or? Most of my Ericsson, second by Phil Box, any other conversations? All right, all those in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, audit is approved. Our next board meeting is December fifteenth of twenty twenty five, right here at six o'clock.
And, and that's our truth and taxation meeting. So, so particularly for, it's, that starts at six ten. So this is maybe more for Tony, because you haven't done it before. So how that's gonna look is we start the meeting, we go until six ten. However far we get, generally, we, we get through like the board reports and things like that. And then we stop, there's an, there is a, there's an, a, a pause or no, a, a, you don't adjourn, you. Oh, shoot. Yeah, there's a recess. Yeah, you recess, you recess the meeting. And then Sarah will call to order the truth and taxation meeting. I come out there and I present basically our tax levy for the public. You, there may be people in our, in our audience that day. I mean, we've had a couple over the years, but generally it's not, it's not attended. But maybe it was you last year. So I will present it. And then, and then during, just during, there's a separate public comment section during that, that meeting. That's just about the truth and taxation.
Yeah.
And then later on, you will approve the actual levy.
So we happen to make it to public forum during our regular meeting.
Yep.
Being based on sort of attack on it, we just have to wait till the.
Yeah, about the truth and taxation, exactly. So that, and then, and then we will adjourn the truth and taxation meeting and come back into our regular meeting and finish the meeting. And then adjourn, it's, it's awkward or it's a little cumbersome, but it's, once you do it a couple of times, you're like, yep, that's, that works, so.
There is a band concert that night as well.
There is a band concert that night as well. Yep, and, and usually, so I, I already know that on the agenda will be, Joe's gonna be on the agenda and truth and taxation, it, it's generally, and the calendar, it's generally a lighter, a lighter meeting. So we will. Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else before we look for most to adjourn? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn the board meeting. Is there a second? Well, she, I shouldn't, second by Crails, last chance to say anything. All right, all those in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Everybody, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving.